I have the Father, Lord, we thank you for the day that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for life, but most of all, Lord, we thank you for your son Jesus died on the cross by our sin, Lord. Lord, just pray that you would be with us today as we do the business in Holmes County School System, Father. Just pray that the things we do and say will be of course your will, Lord. Lord, we just pray that you would bless our students and our staff, Lord, be with them as they go to school each and every day, Lord. And again, we just thank you for all your many blessings in Christ. Amen.
Mr. Justice, do you leave the floor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call the May fifth, two thousand and fifteen meeting of the Holmes District School Board to board. First item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Accept the motion to adopt.
I approve the adoption of the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Justice, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to say something. At the last meeting, we talked about the agenda and how this sentence at the front of the, is in the format and that we were going to put it on the agenda this time. Too bad to leave that on there, and it's not on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
I thought we were going to discuss it next morning, so I misunderstood.
I'm happy we put it on the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I was told at the last meeting, and Mr. Chairman can decide one way or the other.
We won't. You all go ahead.
We can amend the agenda.
Because I don't want this to be changed. I like the way it is, and I don't want it to be changed from one meeting to the other, saying that just people from Holmes County can speak. I want everybody to be able to speak like the sentence says. And so I make a motion that we adopt this agenda format the way it is, hearing the public.
Okay, we have a motion to add the sentence that allows others to speak. We have a second.
We have a second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair of the chair. You concluded the adoption of the agenda in that motion, did you?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to hearing the public, and before we get to that, Lord, we have some guests with us today, Ms. English.
Hi, we are pleased to have Mr. Thompson and Andrea Webb with us today from the LW Cooper Educational Foundation. They select our district as recipient of technology grant funding, and they're here to present the check this morning. We plan to purchase our respond classroom response systems and archiving storage equipment for the district with this funding. So we're happy to have them here with us, and if they would like to speak. Mr. Thompson?
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for having us out. And I am a member of the LW Cooper Educational Foundation, and Ms. Webb behind me as well. Mr. Cooper formed the foundation because he wanted to make a difference in education. He wanted to devote his funds at the end of his life to grants, and the purpose for those grants is for technology. So it's with great pleasure that I present this check to Ms. Kristy English. So anyway, also, you know, for one of the things I hope is that this is not the last check that I'll be delivering on the school board meetings. Thank you.
And in accepting that check, we will need a motion to accept the grant.
Motion that we accept the grant?
Motion by Ms. Owens, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coleman, any discussion or comments you'd like to make this time?
I wouldn't say I do appreciate it, and that is such a generous donation, and especially for technology, we need that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and like I said, we'll be seeing you again.
Thank you.
There are some other numbers on here.
Thanks.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair of the chair. We'll move on to the hearing the public portion, anyone who'd like to come aboard the board this morning.
Okay, Magga Watford, Level thirteen oh eight, Galloway. I want to start by saying our Bethlehem High School is going to be presenting a musical. It's on May twenty first, twenty second, and twenty third, and the show starts at seven o'clock every night. And on the twenty second and twenty third, it will be at Dinner Theater, and it will start at six P. M. I hope all of you sent in, and you're all got it. I also want to say I'm currently a member of the Bethlehem Senior Beta Club at our school, and my sister is in the Bethlehem Junior Beta Club. As you all know, the Bethlehem or the Beta Club represents students who are on the alle or A beyond. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of my mom and I, as well as many other concerned children and parents. We would like for you all to take into consideration that whenever students strive to make such good grades in the meanest program, and when they go to state and they exceed to the next level, which is Nationals, it costs money. My sister and I will both be attending Nationals this year, and my mom's planning on going too. I hope that you reconsider your policy about helping Beta Club, because it means a lot.
Thank you.
I am also here today at this spot, which doesn't need to be maybe more small than the group. I think this is all. Okay. Bye. Come on. There, is that better? Thank you. Okay. I'm here today to speak in behalf of the group of some of Holmes County top students as well, and these students, twenty-six of them from Bethlehem Middle School this year, belong to the Junior Beta Club. This is a club I've heard each of you mention at different times and speak highly of and express support for, and we appreciate that. I've heard you congratulate some of these students on their efforts and their successes in winning state awards. This year Bethlehem School will be sending twenty-six students to the national convention to compete, and we're very excited about that. I understand the maximum amount of financial support currently being offered to assist any group in the national competition is fifteen hundred dollars. For most groups, which are very small, sometimes consisting of only two or three members, this amount goes a long way. For larger groups, this amount is spread very thin. I also understand this amount is not written in a policy, and what has simply been suggested in this amount has just been what has been done. I'm here to ask each of you as our school board members and as those who have been given the authority to plan for and to approve expenditures of funds, please take into consideration that there will at times be larger groups who will compete at national levels. These groups will have greater needs than smaller competing groups. These students have worked just as hard, putting in their hours of preparation and have given their best to excel. These are some of Holmes County's most committed and brightest students, and I believe are the exemplary students that this district needs to fully stand behind and fully support. I believe this board has the ability to find solutions, and there are solutions for this. And they have the ability and authority to find and make the difference with this. And I believe this would be to me unfairly give and support all dedicated students. Maybe providing the necessary funds for travel, bus and gas to and from these national events might be a way of showing your support to help these students, or perhaps this per student amount may be a consideration. As an interested community member, I ask you to please consider and discuss this request for increased funds for larger groups who are competing at the national level. And I'd also like to request further information and explanation of checks written to Holmes County High School during the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Each of these checks can be found on the H T S B dot org website, and is listed on the vendor's list with the description of out-of-county travel. Amounts for these individual out-of-county checks were each well above the fifteen hundred dollar amount, and include checks written for five thousand two hundred and nine dollars and forty-four cents, three thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents, three thousand thirty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents, three thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars and six cents, and four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars among other checks that were written in the same category. An explanation for these out-of-county travel expenditures and why they were allowed to be above the fifteen hundred dollar amount would be appreciated. Thank you very much.
What's the date of the Beta Program?
It is June.
Twenty fifth through twenty ninth for junior beta.
Twenty fifth through twenty ninth for junior and seniors immediately after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Karen Simmons, and I reside at two twelve South Live Oak Street in Geneva. I have a granddaughter and grandson in the Bethlehem School System, and I'd like to speak just a little bit on item five C on your agenda today, exceptional student education policies. I want to share with you just briefly the experience that we had with this program regarding my granddaughter who's in the third grade. My granddaughter has exemplified since early childhood many of the characteristics that are recognized as being gifted, okay, or significantly above the average intelligence of a hundred. Unfortunately, there seems to be no policy in place to recognize these children or to take referrals, and I noticed today that you're going to look at those policies. Let me encourage you to, if you will, examine some of the other smaller school systems around. Geneva City Schools is an excellent place to look. Teachers can refer students, parents can refer students. Guidance counselors routinely look at test scores, standardized test scores, the Otis Living School Ability Test, to target those students who might be in the gifted range and to go ahead and have them tested. Unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be any procedure or policies. Your own handbook says that every year you are to adopt a policy, okay? There's nothing listed on your website when you try to pull up what the policy is for this current year, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. So with regard to my granddaughter, when her mother had asked about a enrichment program, she was told that the best thing for her to do was to find a psychometrist and have her child tested privately. So she looked up the Florida State statutes from the Board of Education and followed their recommendations, and she secured a private psychometrist, paid for it completely out of her pocket, and had the child tested. The psychometrist holds a master's degree, has had over thirty years of experience in psychometry and counseling. She is also certified to train other psychometrists and indeed has trained quite a number of them. So she comes with good credentials and good experience. She chose to test the REAS test, which is developed and printed here in Florida, and is one that the Florida State Board of Education routinely recommends to be used. On September seventh last year, my daughter presented to the officials at Bethlehem School a complete and full report from this psychometrist, all charts, all graphs, the complete battery from the REAS test. It showed my granddaughter to be in the highly gifted level on this test, and it should have been a simple matter then of following the federal statutes, which are to, within ninety days, you are to schedule a meeting with the parents, you aren't to draw in any teachers, anybody that should be involved in this, you're to develop an individual education plan for that child, and you can put them into a program. None of that happened, none whatsoever. In December, when my daughter asked about it again, it was always told we were working on it. No, no contact, zero contact from the exceptional students' department, okay? They suggested in December that maybe she should take the child to Tallahassee and have her tested. No explanation, no reason as to why they went to all of that expense. It turned out to just be a nightmare. The individual who was called upon to test is not certified, was not familiar with the test, did not know what to do with it, told the child to skip certain sections of it because he didn't know how to administer it. They had spent a night in Tallahassee, paid for their hotel, paid for the, gone through the expense of it, and but once again, silence from the exceptional students' education department, none whatsoever. In January, my daughter contacted them again to find out about, can I have test results? What are we going to do, that sort of thing? No response, okay? This is a violation of federal statute. The Florida Department of Education has written a formal apology to my daughter and her husband about the way that her child was treated in Holmes County, and they recognize that this has been totally mishandled. With violating a federal statute, what will happen is the director of your special education program, as well as the school counselor, are going to receive a summons to federal court, and most likely along with your superintendent, to explain why there is no policy and why you discriminated against a child that didn't have special needs. These are federal statutes, okay? They will probably bring about fines, probably bring about the fact that sometimes they remove, fire, or suspend individuals in the program. Administrators are supposed to be responsible for this. So when you look at this today, you need to discuss with this individual who's bringing forth the program, all of these policies. They need to be well aware of the federal statutes. This is not something new. Federal statutes have been out there for over thirty years, okay, on exceptional students. It's a relatively simple process if you just follow up the federal guidelines. And my suggestion is that you get a really beefed-up program and don't let this happen again. The sad part about it is, my granddaughter will receive all the enrichment that she needs, okay? We can provide for that. But there are many children who are bright who do not. And this means that many, many kids, I can look at the number of kids you have enrolled in your enrichment program, and I can tell you that nobody's been identifying because they're way below where statistically you should have, okay? You don't have to be an Einstein to be in the gifted program, okay? Generally speaking, three out of every hundred students will qualify. So you can do the math, you have, what, thirty, four hundred students in your school system? You can do the math and figure out how many kids you should have in the enrichment program. It's as simple as that. But my encouragement to you is get this policy developed, get it set, get it put into practice, and start identifying these kids, okay? It's a simple matter. This is something you should rejoice in, okay? Because when you provide enrichment to a child who already has high intellectual ability, there's no limit to what they may accomplish, okay? Those are the things that bring your school rewards and recognition and that sort of thing, and it should be something that you encourage. Instead, with my daughter, it's been an absolute fight. I mean, it's been like, no, we don't want to bother with it. No, we don't want to do it. We don't care, okay, that this is. And yet, the federal law says you have to provide that, okay? And generally speaking, it's not that big a deal, okay? I mean, you know, not talking about a child that needs adaptive equipment or special laboratories or anything like that, you're just talking about a kid that needs some enrichment activities.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Justice.
Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, you have the for you, a copy of the fourteen, fifteen school year calendar, and it needs to be amended for the days at Bethlehem where we had the bomb scare and the students were out, and that's indicated on April fourteenth and fifteenth.
Per recommendation from Mr. Lawrence, we have a motion to approve the amended calendar of two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Move it through. Motion by Mr. Johnson, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a comment. When do we, why do we note the date that the Bethlehem students were out when the rest of the students were there? I'm just curious.
What's your question?
When we note on the calendar from last year, is my microphone wrong? Can you hear me? No?
I can turn it on.
I can, I can hear you, but I don't understand your question.
Well, I can't turn on the microphone. It says here, April fourteenth and fifteenth, Bethlehem students and staff out for a bomb threat.
Right, we close the school for those two days for the Bethlehem students.
Right, I understand that, but I've never seen it put on there like when the, you know, when there's other things like the SOR or whatever was.
It was put on.
It was put on there?
Yes. Any, anytime that the classes are dismissed for something like that or an emergency, we have to amend the calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair of the chair.
Okay, on the two thousand fifteen calendar that was presented back in November, whenever the calendar committee met at that time, we were looking at the governor and legislature to be able to move the start date back for students so we could finish the semester before Christmas. And they did this, and that's why I presented this calendar. We met, and the teachers, the, they indicated changes. August the third, the teachers will return. August the twelfth, classes begin for students. March eleventh, an early release date. Graduation for Bethlehem will be May twenty third, Poplar Springs, May twenty fourth. Holmes County High, May twenty sixth, Postale High, May twenty seventh. The end of the second semester will be May thirty first, and then the post school, our post school will be June first through the third for teachers. And the calendar committee recommends this to the board.
Okay, per the recommendation for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year calendar, we have a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Johnson, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Justice, any discussion?
Yes, I have a comment. Last board meeting, I suggested we take off Veterans Day, and was that even brought up to the committee?
Veterans Day was brought, it wasn't brought up on this committee meeting. It happened before you mentioned that. Right. We are.
They met again after our last meeting. When did they meet?
We met on, I forget what year, a couple weeks ago.
I think it was the day of our meeting they met again.
Veterans Day has been discussed in the past, several years ago. We, whenever we went to school the first time for a while, Veterans Day, we had some that said, take off. We had the majority that said, veterans, my father included, that said that he enjoyed that because they got recognition before students had otherwise be in a shopping center or at the beach or somewhere. And we had more support from people that didn't, and that's why the calendar committee has kept it.
Well, I know the, the calendar committee meets, but we as a board ultimately have to say so, whether we're going to adopt this or not. So I want to make a motion that we put Veterans Day on our calendar as a holiday. I know that we have enough days in there that we can put another day off, because we always have a few days for insurance at the end of the year. Like when these two days had to be, the school was closed, we don't have to make those up because we have enough allowed in that time that we don't have to make them up. So I'm making that as a formal motion.
Mr. Chairman, we can't take action on something on the agenda.
Correct, I mean, we need to be advertised before you guys make a motion to formal action on everything. We can act.
Okay, well, I make a motion we table the, the calendar until we discuss it further.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Mr. Johnson, we have a motion this time.
Can, can there be any more discussion?
Yes.
What, how much input do the teachers have in this calendar? I know you have a committee person, is that a different person every year? Is it the same person? Do they do a survey with their teachers?
Okay, we have a calendar committee person at Ever School, and it's not the same every year because sometimes we've had people retire and we have to have people come home. I sent out a copy to everyone that has an email address, which means every teacher, most of your employees, school board members, whatever, should have got a copy of this. In that letter, it says, "Get with your calendar committee member. If you have any suggestions or recommendations." There was no one that said anything about Veterans Day at all. There hasn't been any in about four, five years.
Well, the complaint I had was not about Veterans Day, but I had several teachers mention to me about, you know, the early start of school, which we really have no control over, that, that they had made, you know, plans for the out for the fall break and that sort of thing.
When our fall breaks are changed, or the spring break. We kept that because people that work on in the prison system or whatever, they have to make their plans a year ahead of time. And we tried not to mess with any breaks that we already had.
It would just be maybe if they had made reservations for the week before, like a week earlier.
Right.
Anything? How does this calendar fall in line? But I know some of the complaints have been, you're out for a week, and you come right back, and you go in to test. Does this fall in any better alignment with not having that scenario take place, or?
Okay, what they're talking about is, in your, on your spring break, the, our week that we're out is the second week of March, I believe it is, which the testing starts the first week of April. So if you're going to have, if you want, what another thing is, to cut out a spring break, we can get anybody to bring them out. But from April the first through the end of the year, there's no weekend there that you can take a break, because we have, and of course, we have everything. And on the first semester, there's eighty-one days that we have to go before we can call it at the end of the semester. Eighty-one days, eighty-one fifteen minute classes. That ends up on December the eighteenth, I believe it is, or whatever the date. December, I, December the eighteenth would be the eighty-first day. And they want to start on the twelfth. We could have started as early as the tenth of August, but doing that, the teachers would have gone back in July. And this year, they just, they weren't able to go back in July. A few did, but the majority was August third, eleventh, twelfth, start date. And that is also aligned with Washington County's start date, too.
So you're saying that the testing period typically doesn't begin until April first?
We have some in February, but March, there's just a small window in March.
So we'll get back from break and have a little while, hit the ground before we start?
We have one week to get, see, this is when the third and fourth grade start their tests, or the first full week of April. So they have time to get a little bit acclimated back to school, get a little.
I just don't want to see them come back from break and then Monday they're, they're testing.
No, and that, that's what we did. That was thought about. Yeah. We, we looked at the testing schedule, every test date that the state had put out, and this, this is the best one that we could find.
Well, in respect of the Veterans Day, I mean, it's like we discussed, I think, last meeting, I'm all for honoring our veterans, and I think we do, whether we're, we're in school or out of school, and we have our programs. But, you know, from what you're telling me, this is basically what the teachers and staff have agreed upon.
This is from Ever School, yes.
And so, and I don't, I don't know if that is brought up in discussion of the committee meetings about particular Veterans Day, but I know everybody certainly has an opportunity to bring that to the person at each school that is helping to develop the calendar, so, so I understand that.
And with, with Veteran Day celebrations, whenever we started this, we tried to get them as close to Veterans Day, either on Veterans Day if we were in school that day, or if we weren't in school, you know, the Friday or Monday, whichever. Some of the schools, I think here, Bonneville Elementary uses the high school band, so they do theirs a day different than the high school does theirs. So there's my feel, a day or day earlier or a day late, I don't know. But that's about the only one I know of.
Speaking of the, of Veterans Day, I, I'm a veteran, and I was privileged to speak at Poplar Springs one year, and that was a real honor for me. And all the kids were there, and, and like I said, it was an honor for me, and I go to almost all the Veterans Day programs that they have in the county. And it's, it's real good programs, and I'm not saying we couldn't have it on another day, but, but I like it when the kids are there. I do, personally.
I know my dad, he, he was a veteran, two wars, and he ended. That's a. That's the recognition that our veterans get, that if we're out of school, they will not get that recognition.
No, I disagree with you on that. We can have that recognition any day, we can have it on Friday or Monday, and we don't have to have it on Veterans Day. And I appreciate the Veterans Day programs, we can still have them if we take off Veterans Day. And they can go somewhere else, if they want to go to Panama City, to the Veterans Day Parade, or wherever they're having a Veterans Day event, they can have two of them that way. So I want to go on the record to say that I am for taking Veterans Day as a holiday.
Okay, any other discussion? I would say maybe this is something, too, I mean, I don't know if we want to put it out there when they're, you know, you send out, what, two or three different calendars?
Usually, yeah. Where there's three or four different ones that they have scenarios that they can go from, guess as a guy.
Right. And I'm not saying necessarily this will be changed, but it could be for next year, maybe one of those calendars has a scenario where Veterans Day.
And if they start on the 10th, if they start on the 10th next year, there would be a day built in there that they, an extra day.
So, I mean, that might be just something to look for ahead.
If we, if we take Veterans Day off, it has to be approved by the union?
Oh, but, not, not really by the union, it wouldn't, they, the union forms the calendar committee essentially. It is the union.
And a, whatever recommendation the calendar committee comes up with, that's fine. Any other discussion?
Yes, I want to say my father is a World War II Purple Heart veteran. If I, if he was still living and I was obligated to go to a Veterans Day program, I wouldn't be able to spend that with my father. And there's the same way with many other families. That's, I have, my husband is a veteran, my father-in-law is a veteran, so I am proud of our veterans, and I want to be honored with that day off. And we can still do the programs, and that is not impossible to do the programs on a different day.
Okay, current motion on the floor is to table approval of calendar. We have a motion, we have not received a second, is there a second?
I'll see.
Second by Mr. Johnson, to table the approval of the calendar. Any further discussion?
We're, we're tailing it. I'm over still on the other.
The new motion has to be under our work. Ms. Coleman has made a motion to table the approval of the calendar.
Do we have any deadlines or anything like that?
Yes, I have to submit this, I say, May the 31st, mistake.
I'm overseeing my second. Just remains clear, we have a motion on the floor to table approval of the calendar for 15-16 school year. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. We're back to the original motion to approve the school calendar as presented for the school year 2015-16. We have a motion by Mr. Justice, a second by Mr. Justice. Any further discussion on the original motion?
Yes, I'm not going to say it on the motion, but I'm going to remind the board members that anything that is said between board members, like the vice chair and the chairman, has to be audible to the public during the school board meeting. We can't discuss whether we're going to rescind the motion or not and just do it whispering. We have to bring it out.
I believe I said it real quick here that I would say for that motion.
There was some confusion as to what motion was pending at the time.
There was.
And I think Mr. Johnson was seconding the motion of the original motion, which was to adopt this calendar, so I don't think there was, I think that once the chairman corrected and clarified for everyone as to what motion was pending at the time, that's when Mr. Johnson rescinded his second. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
That's correct. Okay. Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
No.
Mr. Johnson? Yes. Chair vote, she is, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to item C, ESE Policies and Procedures 2016-17. Ms. Jordan?
I ask for the board's approval for the exceptional student education policies and procedures for 2014 through the 15th through 2016 through the 17th.
We have a motion by staff to accept policies and procedures as presented, do we have a motion? A motion by Mr. Johnson, do we have a second? I like the second, it's open up for discussion. Second by Mr. Justice for purpose of discussion.
Yes, I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, that we need to table this also and go over it. This is a thick booklet, and I don't know if all of y'all had a chance to go through it thoroughly, but I did not, and I would like to, to ask some questions also about what the audience member brought up. Are we abiding by federal guidelines on the ESE policy?
Yes, ma'am, I work closely with the Bureau of Exceptional Education and Student Circuses with DOE, and they have worked with me writing these policies, and then I had to bring it to you.
Any other discussion?
So our gifted program is intact and by statute?
Yes, ma'am, my page is, if I rest it out. To section A.
Part 3.
What page number is that, Ms. Jordan? Down the bottom left?
149. It starts on 149, I want to pick it up.
Could you enlighten me on the situation that was mentioned by Karen, or is that something that we need to discuss later?
I think at this point, the Ms. Simmons has indicated basically that there's going to be a pending lawsuit, so I would recommend to the board, if you want to ask questions or you don't answer questions concerning this situation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Um.
Ms. Coleman?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair vote, she is, thank you.
Thank you.
Out of county out of state students, Ms. Superintendent.
Do you have a list there?
Miss the wing, can I just ask one question?
No, ma'am, you can't. You can have a seat, because you're out of order, okay, so you need to have a seat.
Okay, that's why I was asking, well, have, what would be the correct order, just ask a question?
It won't be, not at this point. They're here in the public section, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I just.
Thank you.
And we have, five students in the Jackson County, I don't know if we approve this, Ms.
Superintendent, we have a motion to approve each of the creeps, a motion to approve the students. I got it. Five new students?
I believe that we've confirmed these students entering the two county.
I have a motion by Ms. Coleman, and we have a second. Second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion concerning out of county, out of state students? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Now, out of state, over to the creeps.
Okay, first trip, Holmes County High School, teen read, moved to Dublin. Second, Popper Springs High School, junior vet into the national convention in Tennessee, the 25th through 29th of June. There was Betham High School, June 20th through July 3rd, FBLA to the national competition in Chicago. Fourth from Bethlehem, ZF8, June 29th through July 2nd, the state convention in Orlando. And the last from Poston High School's FCC LA, July 4th of the night to Washington DC for their national competition.
Those recommendations superintendent, we have a motion to approve the creeps.
I make a motion and we approve this, Phil.
A motion by Ms. Owens, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Justice, any discussion? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair vote, she is, thank you. Moving on to item 7, consent agenda, we have a motion to approve the invoices, the DOs, workshop, major accessory minutes, and the monthly financial report. I move through this. Motion by Mr. Johnson, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say something, Mr. Chairman, the motor vehicles, can you tell me what that line item is, the 34,000?
That was two vans that were purchased.
Yeah, two vans were purchased for students, a couple of times ago, or something.
We purchased three funds from.
Slasberg funds.
So all of this is funded by the speeding ticket? Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair vote, she is, thank you. Personnel recommendation, Ms. Superintendent?
Okay, I recommend the following. Except the resignation from appointment for Bruno Meadows at Popper Springs, effective 5/29. Cheryl Harrison at Bonney Middle School, effective 6/30. amend the retirement day for Andy Howell to June, to July 31st instead of June 10th. And approve a medical leave absence on Jeanette Bales, A to Betham High School, Jenny Bales at Betham High School, starting the 21st of April and ending June 5th.
Our recommendation from Superintendent of Personnel, we have a motion. I move we approve the recommendations on personnel. A motion by Mr. Justice, we have a second. Second, second by Mr. Johnson, any discussions? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair vote, she is, thank you. Out of nine federal state programs, VPK summer?
I will do that, Ms. Ms. meeting in Orlando, this is our standard VPK contract for the summer, and I can wish we approved that.
Recommendation, Ms. Superintendent, to approve the VPK provider? We have a motion. I move we approve the VPK provider. A motion by Mr. Justice, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion?
Is this the same provider we had last year?
I believe it is, this is the standard thing we have to do every year by law so that we have it available to students that want to take advantage of during the summer. We usually have a lot of children, the bill is very few, but it hasn't been available.
Any other question? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair vote, she is, thank you. Put it down out of 10, how much it should pay?
We're still in the middle of testing, state testing, so all some prayers for students going through that, the teachers, and we will have our ground breaking for the new school, May the 22nd, at 10 o'clock, up at the, what used to be the fairgrounds behind the high school. And I've been to some plays, things are going to do with plays, looking forward to Betham High's play, I think Holmes County High School's got one for the year over, so a lot of good things are going on.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Owens?
I'd just like to stay along with Mr. Dixon, there are a lot of exciting things going on, end of year banquet, a lot of awards that maybe we don't hear about through the year, and we get to see those presented. I know FBLA up at Bethlehem has won some state awards, and I hear seven of our fine arts teachers are going to be getting a grant, so that's very exciting. I'm very pleased with the money from the L.W. Cooper Foundation to go into our technology. Also, I'd just like to do a little shout out to our principals. I was involved in going around to the schools this past week promoting our PBR, the Juants Club PBR event, and I was so impressed with our principals, they knew we were coming, they were very organized, and our students were just very well behaved, and I appreciate that. And I know that this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I just also want to say to the teachers how much that I appreciate them, you know, best teachers teach from the heart and not from the book, and one of my days this past week, a teacher asked me to come by her class and to see some of the things that her students have created, and it's just exciting, and it just is real thrilling to see our teachers put their whole heart into this and creating students or having them to create in their own image, not someone else's image, and I'm very proud of our teachers and our school system.
Thank you.
I'd just reiterate what Ms. Owens said about our teachers, and they do an outstanding job, it's a challenge, goodness, it's a challenge, but they're doing a great job, we appreciate every one of them, appreciate our staff, and so.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes, I don't think my microphone is on, can you help me with that? Is it on? It's not very loud, can you adjust the volume of it?
Not there, you can't.
Can y'all hear me out there?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to say several things. I brought this up in our last workshop, the need for differentiated pay for a culinary teacher. I was told by the superintendent at our last workshop that this was a union issue, and the union has to present it to us. The school board has the authority to adopt a proposal for differentiated pay and present it to the union. It can work both ways. I don't know very much about unions, but I checked into it and I found out that you can, we as a board, we're the ones controlling the money. We can make a proposal and take it to the union. We have that authority. Then they can review our proposal, and they can either agree with it or disagree with it. And since this involves welfare of teachers, I'm sure they will be glad to get a proposal from us and not have to go back and forth negotiating. They can come back to us if they don't like our proposal. The irony of the situation is that the union said, I spoke to the union person, and they said the school board turned down their proposal for this differentiated pay three times. We've never been brought a proposal on this teacher for culinary. Does anyone at this table remember bringing this before the board? The union bringing before the board her having differentiated pay? Only thing I remember was a pay raise. That's the only thing I remember, it was not differentiated pay. What has to be done for this teacher or any of the culinary teachers if they perform these duties to get differentiated pay? We have a list here of basketball, baseball, cheerleader, coral, football, golf, and it goes on and on, and this lady goes over and above the line of duty to help these students get their hours. And she's doing it because she cares for the students. And we're going to stand the risk of that program going away, and who suffers? The students suffer. I've attended many of their events, and everyone there says how great they are, and I agree, they do an excellent job, they're very mannerly, that you're treated like you would be in a nice restaurant, I mean, it's, it's that good. My husband attended a Veterans Day banquet over at Wausau. They don't just stay at Holmes County, they go to different places, and they go almost every weekend. She doesn't even have any family time hardly. He attended this event, there were many. He attended this event. There were many people. There are judges, state representatives, many more veterans, and they raved about their service. And we're neglecting this teacher, giving her a mere pennance for what she does. She goes and spends her time getting groceries. She goes and spends her time standing up. She goes to a wedding and might stay 15 hours. It's a disgrace to me that we cannot give our teacher that deserves it, that goes above her line of duty. She takes her culinary students here and there. She even... She even accepts Holmes County High School students for them to get service hours because that teacher does not do out-of-school events, and they have to have these hours in order to gra... to get their certification. And I don't know if any of you know, this program earns money for the district. For every student who gets certified, there's $600 FTE money, and 60 of that off the top goes straight to the district. So she plans, if everything goes like it is now, she'll have 20 students next year that's going to get certified. So we're going to have $1,200 off the top from that FTE money, and we can't give her differentiated pay. Florida statute says the School Board will designate positions to be filled, the pay and qualifications. And if the School Board cannot... can do that, we can certainly vote on providing a supplement for teachers who qualify and meet the requirements. We can set the events, and if the other teachers want to do it, then everyone that does those events will get that supplement. We need to discuss it, iron out the details, and come up with a proposal. This is about our children. Ultimately, our children will pay the price if this program ends. They have an opportunity here to earn culinary certification, which goes a long way when they graduate to get a job. If we're talking about a $3,000 or $4,000 supplement, that is, I'm sure she spends more than that in her gas, her vehicle to pull the trailer, the time buying food, preparing food, setup. She's already done 20 events this year, and there's more to come. We'll be going to a banquet. I will. I'll be going to the banquet tonight. When we sit down to eat, how many hours do you think this teacher put in to get this meal ready? Cooking, setting it up, shopping for the food. And I'd like to say for the record, in order to make this fair across the board, I propose that we discuss this, and any culinary teacher will be eligible, any of the culinary teachers will be eligible to receive the differentiated pay if they meet the required number of events that will be determined by us as the School Board. And I would like this addressed in our next workshop so we can discuss it and hopefully come to an agreement and present it to the union for negotiation. And then I have other things to say. This one really concerns me. I'm very upset over this. I was on my way to field day last Friday, and I got an anonymous message to check out a building in my district. As a sworn elected official, it is my duty to provide proper attention to the health, welfare, and safety of students. I raised my hand, just like everybody else at this table did, and I swore to uphold the duties of Holmes County's school system. We have a building at Pastrana High School. It had a small leak, about the size of a quarter, two years ago. Because of our negligence after two years of it being leaking, it's leaking a lot more. It's leaking badly. The plaster is falling off the ceiling. Computer has been ruined due to the leak. And this was pointed out to us in our initial walkthrough. We went through that building, and that person told us, "Well, I've got a little leak right here, just a small one." So now... This problem is... is gone beyond that. They, um, they secured it because it's leaking so bad. They put a tarp over it. I don't have a problem with the tarp. I have a problem with the way the tarp was put up there. They secured it with 12 by 12 concrete papers. Does anybody see a problem with this? If a child walked by and this blew off and hit them on the head, or as a teacher, this is ridiculous. This has been there for almost a month. It's been there for almost a month, the tarp has. If it was an overnight fix, I could see, but with us leaving that there to endanger the people on the school campus, that disturbs me. Four of the papers have already blown off, so don't say it can't happen. There's four of them have blown off. One of those that blew off broke the septic line. I don't know if raw sewage was out on the ground. That was fixed. But there's still a tarp with papers on top of the roof that could be sent as a projectile if a wind came up and hit a student. But thank God, nobody has been hurt, and I'm just... as of 2:00 PM yesterday, there's still papers up there. One of them is hanging a couple of inches off of the roof, off of the eve, and it could drop at any time. This is unacceptable. It endangers the safety of our children, and I will not remain silent when it involves the safety of our children. This issue has to end today. As a School Board member, I demand these papers be removed from the roof, and I want to ensure that this gets done by making a motion. I move that these papers be removed from the roof today, no later than 1:00 PM, and the tarp is secured in a way that meets Florida building codes until the final repairs can be made. Like I say, it's been two years this has been leaking, and I would like a Board member to be assigned to oversee these papers are removed, and I'd like the Superintendent to report to us that it is completed. Whatever it takes to get this fixed is... is my number-one priority. It should be everybody's number-one priority. This staff member shouldn't have to work in these circumstances. And furthermore, our staff should not be intimidated and feel afraid to speak up when there is a problem. So I have put that in a formal motion. Does anyone second that? Or does anyone have something to say about this? I don't see how you...
I'd say we agree. This safety issue needs to be directed at the date, and it's an emergency in those field of safety. We can take action.
Ms. Owens under... We're going to appear to be being heard on this. When were you aware of it, this coming up?
Friday.
This past Friday, I thought. You said you... you were out during the walkthrough. Because first thing I knew about it. You said you were told during the walkthrough.
We were told during the walkthrough, and I thought the Superintendent would have taken care of it.
And it was taken care of until this last rain came, and it started back leaking. That's when the tarp was put on. I already measured it, uh, how metal roofed it on it. But it wasn't reported to us until this last monsoon that we had last week. That's the first we knew about it.
Yeah, I was...
So we can't fix something unless we know it.
Well, if you're going to get out there and measure it, why don't you take the concrete papers off the roof? The... the tarp is not even in place. It's blown out of place. It's not doing anything.
We will. Because it's not raining yet again.
It hasn't been raining for a couple of weeks.
But the concrete paper that you said busted the septic line did not get blown off.
There's four of them.
It was dropped off.
All four of them were dropped?
Well, for one, it busted the septic line. But you can't fix something when you don't know what's going on. And that's the problem. You may know it, but unless I know it, it's not going to be fixed.
But that's been almost four weeks ago. I checked the calendar. It was the day of the dinner theater. That was the night when it had the monsoon. It was like three days short of being 30 days. I checked it. So it's been almost a month.
It hasn't been a month. Two weeks ago, that's when we heard about it. Because the day that if you look and see when the tarp went on, that's the day we found out about it.
Well, it happened the day, the night of the dinner theater, and...
Well, I don't know when it happened.
We did have a plan of action for it.
Yeah, well, we probably imagined it, fixed it, put the roof on it.
You have to make it clear, paint it blue. Something new.
Well, I'll send it back down there today. Yeah.
Well, anybody in the real world would put boards across there and secure that tarp the way it's supposed to be secured, not put concrete papers on top of the building and leave it for almost a month.
It's not been a month. I'm over here and ready.
Well, let's say it's three weeks then.
Let's say two weeks.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
One day is too long.
Do we have a second?
And your only motion. Coleman asks that the... the papers be secured, that they...
Yeah, and then I want to make sure a Board member is assigned to oversee these papers are removed and properly secure the tarp. If nobody else wants to do it, I will.
I trust you're making people do that.
For the motion, we have a second.
Uh, I'll second it. Have those papers secured and removed. Make sure there's no danger. The tarp is.
We have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I want to say one more thing, and I want to say this for the record. I'm sure there are many parents and teachers who are not aware of the policy passed last month regarding having student cell phones turn on... turned on during the class day. I was the only Board member that voted against having the cell phones on during the school day. Only two weeks passed since we adopted that policy, and there was an incident occurred at Holmes County High regarding texting. Do all of you as Board members not see the possibilities and the problems that can be caused with children? They are children. They do not realize their... the consequences of their actions and the social media and the pressure that we're... we're saying these are for education, but they're students, they're children. They're going to act like children, and they're going to do things like this, and it could be worse next time. And I ask everyone on this Board to seriously think about this decision long and hard because we need to work on this together to correct this problem before something worse happens. And it will happen. We've just opened up a keg of worms, a can of worms, to let students have their phones on all day. And I talk to people every day. They're like, "Oh, I didn't know that." And I want to go on the record to let people know this is happening in Holmes County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, I'm trying to motion to John. Motion?
I agree, John.
Motion by Mr. Justice, we have a second. Second. Thank you. Mr. Johnson? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.